And hopefully, I've written correctly. I didn't reprint the agenda that was revised by Sandy. But I think the only addition was 7.5. But if anyone sees me messing up on the order on the end. Are there any other adjustments needed to the agenda? 3.0, Audience and Communication. 4.0, we do not have any presentations tonight. 5.0, Reports to the Board. 5.1, Principal's Report. I don't know if the principals want to speak to anything or use your questions.
Sure, I can just give an update. This is the last meeting we had. We were looking at 5th grade enrollment. We're currently at 53 students. 27 in Dave Beard's class, 26 in Mary Morosky's class. We're actually at the same enrollment we had in 5th grade last year, but we have pairs to support us this year. And if you look at the enrollment report, we did have two students who withdrew, but they did not withdraw because of our class sizes or personal reasons.
Anything else? Any questions on the Principal's Report?
Just want to bring a little light to just the one sentence in here about breakfast in the gardens. And just, I wanted to share that a little bit. On our second day of pre-service as a staff, we organized with the help of the CCS Green Team, which used to be the 4Rs, and Food Squad. Breakfast for staff on the second day around the compost shed area. So the custodians moved all the tables and Elizabeth Skypack didn't blink an eye at putting out a buffet for 70 people outside. And it was just, it was of course a gorgeous day. And it was a really nice way to start the day. And then followed by two little mini workshops about the compost shed itself and how it's going to link to our next sort of iteration of sustainability efforts. And then the outdoor classroom space that's been created by those sun chokes that were planted last year. If you haven't been, had a chance to check that area out, I really encourage you to do so. It's been a lot of classrooms, students and teachers have been taking advantage of it. So it's exciting stuff.
Well, I was there right after that garden breakfast. The staff definitely seemed to be very happy and energized after that. That was a great idea. The one thing I wanted to say about the report, I was pleased, although you hope that every student invited to come to summer school attend, it does look to me, based on previous years, that we had a much better success in getting more kids to participate. So hopefully that continues. I thought that was a good trend. Anyone else have questions or on the Principal's Report? 5.2, CSSU debrief. I think everyone was there for at least part of it. The common topic was special education delivery. The CSSU budget currently is running in a favorable position, which is, you know, possibly good for our local budgets as well. And as you all know, we then had an executive session with all board members. Is there anything else that we should highlight? All right. 5.3, Fourth Quarter Financial Management Report. Cindy or Eric maybe wants to lead us on this. I read the thing that says we're in a $147,267 favorable position, which seems good to me. And the fact that food service finished better than budget is definitely a new good trend. Do we want Cindy to go through it, or do you want to go through it, Eric?
Cindy, can you speak to some of the questions I have?
I can try with some help from my trusty sidekicks next to me.
Okay, so I was just, so it looked like, obviously the final number came out better than expected. It came out better than what we thought it was going to look like just three months before the end of the year, right? So I'm looking at the March projections versus the final. And it wasn't so much on the revenue side, it was on the spending side. I'm inferring from the commentary on the first page that that was driven by special ed. Yeah, that was the first item, special ed revenues down. And then instructional expenses in a variety of categories. Can you elaborate? It looks like we sort of, as of March, we were projecting sort of $46,000 positive in terms of expenditures, right? It came out 212, so it was a pretty big swing. It was unexpected. Was, you want to just kind of expand on the comments there under July, where it came from?
I can try. We haven't had our admin review of this until Thursday.
Yes.
So we're doing a little bit of a joint here, but... So I'm sure when Greg and Audrey saw the number, projected number in March, they took, made efforts to reduce and not spend where they didn't have to. I think Martha was also able after March to release the snowplow money, the oil money, the money you hold not knowing when the needle is ever going to end. And also making adjustments for, I believe you had higher snow plowing than anticipated. So Dave would have made adjustments in his O&amp;M budget. You've had a retirement in O&amp;M that helped. There was a couple of students that either their services changed or no longer are at the school, so that allowed some savings there.
And those would have been special ed students?
Correct. So either something changed in the delivery model, so we didn't have to hire a para that we thought we had to hire at the time, or they left this district. Either one of those could have happened. I don't know if there was anything else to you can think of that could add.
I think we're going to look at closer later this week. I think there was a significant savings in electrical. And again, Martha, we encumber all that money based on assumptions and based on projections. And then we're able to reconcile that in the fourth quarter, based on what we're actually going to spend.
I guess that was kind of my question to Bob, and if you're here, I guess I'd ask it again. It was just, when we sort of budgeted at the beginning of the year, you know, it's useful to have some sense for what the range of possible outcomes are and how volatile a particular line item is. It sounds like even with something sort of as straightforward as electric, you know, we're not, we can't find out at the end of the year. You know what I mean? Like, we're not getting updates like, just all of a sudden at the end of the year you have a windfall or you don't. And then also with the special ed, we had a presentation on that tonight. And I guess, I'm just curious how much in a typical plan for a kid, is there a lot of volatility around that in terms of a delivery? Like, was this, I can see if a kid left a district, you'd have a big, or somebody came to the district, it'd be a big swing. But did their plans change very dramatically during the course of the year?
Well, that kind of, that doesn't, I mean, I guess it matters for this year, but that's an issue that's not part of our budgeting next year for the current upcoming budget, right? So we were, this is sort of that interim year where we're getting billed back, but now it's just based on ADM for next year.
This FMI reflects that you pay for what you get, starting the first quarter of this current fiscal year that we're now in. Yes, it'll be based on an assessment. So you won't see the swings unless...
But we'd still see five changes in 504 plans because that's still a local. And this other one, instructional improvement at our, so is that just tier-two interventions or something?
That's usually, I don't know, in your school, but most schools, that's professional development.
I think that's, again, that's the pool of money that teachers can access to go to professional development. And I think certain numbers are encumbered based on histories. And then teachers on some years may spend more or less. They don't all use what they're contractually obligate, not obligate, what contractually they're able to use.
With so many people doing the math, the best practices class, they haven't had the capacity to take another course. So that's, all the schools across the S U are seeing that. But by contract, we have to budget for the potential exposure. And to Greg's point, we don't know that until June 30th. But on your electricity question, so when Mike goes to build that line, he will build it on this year's actual, so you should see, I won't say an exact savings, but a similar savings as you go into budget next year. Would be my assumption. And however Mike does that formula.
Thanks.
Any other questions? 5.4, Facilities Committee.
This would be quick. First Facilities Committee meeting of the year is actually next Friday. But on general matters, the elevator that we approved last year was getting built and may have been finished today. Actually, they were there today. We continue to look at the roofs as a problem. In fact, this week, there were leaks into the 5th grade classroom. Again, I'll expand much more on this probably at next meeting. But I think in the next budgeting cycle, we'll be looking at money to really do some roof repair that's going to be significant. And we'll get some concrete numbers and go from there. So that's my very short report on that. Again, next time after our first meeting.
Thank you. 6.0, Discussion Matters. 6.1, Traffic. I don't... Who's talking about traffic?
I believe this came up as, this is the little birds telling me since I wasn't at your retreat. This came up as a requested item at the retreat to talk about it.
So I assume this is doing, we want to talk about the backup on the east side. Probably at pickup time? Are we seeing the same kind of sort of traffic jams this year that we've seen in the past? Not there at pickup anymore, I don't know.
We haven't observed that explicitly this year. I don't know how it compares to last year.
I do not pick up at pickup time very often, but the two times I've had to do it this year, it has been, for some reason, much less, much fewer cars. There have been less of a backup, and I don't, but that's a very small sample size. But when I would have to get somebody to go somewhere immediately after school last year, I'd really have to plan to not be on the road. But this year, show up late and still get there, so.
Last two years, I've ramped up my pitch to kindergarten families. Susan can attest to this. Around, you know, giving the buses a try and then it's a really, you know, it's a, it's a great opportunity for kids to get to and from school and save on gas and emissions and traffic and enhance the safety. I don't know if that's had an impact or not. That's one grade. That's 40 families.
What is the kindergarten parents who sometimes don't park and walk? They just kind of, you know, it does tend to hold up traffic more, so I can see that being a big element.
We also integrated a little fun bus ride to kindergarten visiting day, which we hadn't done. So that was, that's been two years running now.
Excellent.
I just have a question about traffic. Why aren't we posted like a school zone, a chopper, you know, flashing?
It's low down to 25 type signage, you know? Because we, people fly when you're pulling out. I don't know if anyone else has experienced that?
Because it's hard to see.
On that rise of the Charlotte-Hinsburg Road. And I'm just curious as to why there's no really good signage that's a school area. And I know we don't have sidewalks. I don't know if it's because of that. But I'm just kind of surprised that the speed limit is what it is.
Well, it does say school zone, but maybe it's not.
I just feel like, you know, it's...
Yeah, I wonder, I wonder if we would need to ask the select board for that or...
It's not very well marked. I think there's a sign that says 25, but it doesn't have that flashing light right across the wall.
I don't even think it says 25. I think it's, yeah.
Is it 30?
Yeah, it's 30, yeah. Well, it would have to be the town that would put in a sign and a town that would approve. And given their whole trying to change the speed limit on Spear, I don't know how much authority they have to change the speed. But maybe even one of those during school hours.
Yeah.
Speed limit is, whether or not that's enforceable, but at least it make people pause. Well, maybe, yeah, let's put it down as something to see what we could do about, yeah.
I wonder if that's a state statute?
Yeah.
I guess not.
Well, okay, that's a good thing.
Town roads, the town, so it's real. And we're talking about town roads. Those aren't state routes.
They can, but there's regulations about if it's under the state 50 miles per hour. You have to, it has to be voted on and it's a couple of years before implementation or something.
Well, it takes time, but they have that authority.
All right, I have that on my little list of follow-up.
On the subject of traffic. I had not been at the school this year yet at quitting time, so I can't comment. I'd be reluctant to characterize what's going to be the entire year behavior in the first couple of weeks of school. I can say that the times that I was there last year at closing time, I was amazed how bad it was. So it's nice that you've addressed the issue with some of the parents, but I, I still believe there are behaviors in there that simply are rude and borderline asocial that contribute to the congestion. And I think as the year goes by, it typically gets worse. And that's probably right, probably more.
Right now, there's sports after school, so.
Well, I was going to say there's a lot of participation this fall.
And then the second part of that is our signage about traffic flow. It's signage that's designed for people who already know what the regulations are. But as you approach those entrances and exits, particularly the one in front of the gym, in front of the north side of the gym, lots of people pull in there before they realize that they're not supposed to pull in.
Right.
So I think Mike, or somebody might take, like the Facilities Committee, might take a look at how things are signed and think about making the regulations more clear, more visible signage.
Dave and I had a conversation last year about signage at the corners of that entrance. And his comment was, been there, done that, not, those aren't his words, that the plows, they get hammered by the plows every year. So, but that would be a good thing to address with the Facilities Committee.
Well, the answer to that is not to not have signs, but to figure out a way to have signs that don't get pounded by the plows.
Excellent. Anyone else? All right, 6.2, Communications Plan. So Jean, who is the Chair of the CSSU Board, thought it would be a good idea to have some, a one-time meeting, though it could be expanded if people wanted it to, for the local boards to get together to talk about a communications plan. And that meeting, if we all think we want to submit an article to our local paper about technology integration, maybe one person does it and we share it with each other. Or around bigger things that maybe we want, we would want CSSU staff input on something that we want to inform the people of Charlotte about. Maybe we all coordinate so that we're not asking CSSU for the same information over and over. So is anyone interested in what is, has been described as a one-time meeting to talk about communications?
If it's a one-time thing, I'll go.
Yes, all right. And it could be more than one person, if more than one person wants to go. All right, excellent. Thank you, Mark. And moving right on, 6.3, Communications Board's Corner. I received an email from Brett yesterday from the Charlotte News saying, "You guys haven't been submitting that much. We'd love to have you submit more." And he was, there was supposed to be Emma Slater, who just graduated from CVU and is taking a gap year and is writing for the news, was supposed to be here tonight. And, but hopefully she'll be coming to our meetings every month and doing a, you know, a little blurb for the paper. But I can't remember where we are with the last, we were doing, kind of basing it on presentations. I don't know what people want to do going forward.
Well, I would suggest that this current one would probably have something to do with teacher contracts, based on what happened at this meeting.
Okay. Anyone else have an idea for... All right, so maybe we'll circle back and see if someone wants to write something once we get to Action Matters. All right, 6.4, Budget Assumptions. Take it away, Cindy.
Do you all have a corrected copy? But as of, I think, this afternoon, made a few updates.
Here, you can use mine. I looked at it before.
There's some more.
Anyone else? Susan?
So the item button, item number one, which the board, I believe, is going to go in the executive discussion and discuss further, would be your assumptions around salary and wage increases for next year's budget. The teachers right now, the recommendation would be per contract, assuming that the contract's ratified. If not, then we'll need guidance on what you want us to put in. You're about to start negotiations with your union support staff. There's a recommendation on that amount and then for your non-union as well. And then he made some updates, particularly for Charlotte in item number 13, that the, just to clarify, the contract expense will actually be at CSSU with an assessment to Charlotte to comply with the statute. And that there's a change in service plan. The purchase formerly occupational therapy, physical therapy, and psychological services were considered a purchased service. They are now part of the consolidated specialized, so those just be done part of the service plan. We were able to bring on our own physical therapist this year since we have a critical mass of people in OT and physical, and psychological therapists. You had purchased a number of days. You'll still submit a service plan that indicates a number of days, and we will do our staffing based on the total number of days requested across the issue. And then ELP, number 18, there's an update, the ELP tuition payment. Other than that, it's the same listing he sent you out in August, I believe, or early September.
Any questions for Cindy on these baseline assumptions? And I think we will be voting to approve these baseline assumptions, so, in a minute, so. Any questions? All right. Moving on. Action Matters, 7.1. Do I have a motion to approve the 2014-15 Board Work Plan? Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. 7.2, Do I Have a Motion to Approve Budget Assumptions and Budget Calendar?
I'll move.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you. Promotion carries, 7.3. Do I have a motion to appoint a Policy Committee member?
Do you volunteer first?
Well, I'll tell you about the dates. I have done this in the past. And I can, I can fit that into my schedule, but if someone else is interested, I'm more than happy to have someone else do it. Cindy set out the dates, which maybe Cindy, you have right there?
I do.
Okay.
They're mostly the fourth. If I'm looking at it correctly. The fourth Wednesday of the month. There's a couple anomalies towards the third because of school vacations.
But no meetings in...
No meetings in November and December because of budgeting.
Does anyone want to join the fun and wacky policy committee? All right, well, if someone wants to nominate me, I will continue to do that.
I nominate first of all.
All right.
I second said nomination.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, 7.4 Personnel. 7.4.1. Do I have a motion to approve a leave of absence request for math para educator?
I should have taught this. You probably should do 7.4.2 first, because if you don't hire her, she won't need a leave.
So let's flip flop those around. Do I have a motion, 7.4.2, do I have a motion to hire a .8 FTE math coordinator? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And any discussion? Anyone want information from Cindy or Greg and Audrey?
What does this person call it? Don't say coordinate math.
So they are taking on the role, this is the same position that we've had, but we were without a math coordinator and it was, this person's filling the position. So this, this position is a lot involved. They support teachers directly in the implementation of our math programs. And they participate in all the best practice professional development with teachers. They support teachers in integrating the best practices that they learn in the professional development. They serve as a liaison between the school and the S U. Attend math coordinator meetings with Molly, bring that information back to us.
Tier-two services.
Tier-two services. They help coordinate all the tier-two services supports for students identified as benefiting. It's a, it's a big position. There's a lot involved. I'm probably forgetting a lot. Those are the big ones.
It's open because Pam Piper retired.
At the end of last year, Ben Moore had moved into it, but he found another position in another school district and resigned in late August, mid-August.
Mid-August.
So that's why we're filling it today, as opposed to earlier.
Reason I ask for that is because I've commented before that the research is that curriculum coordination has no bearing on student achievement. The way you describe this position, it sounds, it sounds more of a hybrid kind of a thing than pure curriculum coordination. Is that an observation that you'd agree with?
Uh, yes, I would.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any, is that all?
Yes.
Okay. 7.4.1, Do I Have a Motion to Approve a Leave of Absence Request for the Math Para Educator, who we've now just hired as the math coordinator? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? 7.5, Do I Have a Motion to Ratify This 2014 Through 2017 Collective Bargaining Agreement with Our Teachers? Do you have a motion?
I'll move.
A second? Thank you. I assume we will have some discussion. Is there any need for any of this to be in executive session? We just had a executive session collectively with the other school boards. Is there any need to do, to pull out, or should we just go ahead with the open meeting part?
I'm going to clear that. We will be referring to details that have not yet been made public, although technically they are done. But we've always kind of skirted around that. In English, that means we'll be talking about how much money we're paying. So what's your answer? Does that require executive session, or can we just do that here?
I think you can do that out here in public if you'd like. I think if you thought your board was going to go a different direction and may need to strategize because you were going to have further negotiations, you'd want to do that in executive session.
Thank you.
Well, it's probably a vain hope, but I think we should have executive session.
At this point, okay. Then I guess I'll move us into executive session. All right, we're out of, out of executive session. We are back to, where are we? We're on 7.5. And we had a motion to ratify the contract. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? No? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? The motion passes. Eight point O consent agenda, is there a need to pull anything out of the consent agenda? No, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Nine point O, director's comments.
We had asked to have hiring put on the agenda.
Being involved in, Clyde and I asked to have the faculty hires be put on the agenda, just a discussion of that process.
Thank you. I accidentally didn't go to agenda planning this month. So I will, and Cindy will help me remember, since we are now agenda planning with Cindy. Thank you, I will.
Since I, you hire? What are you looking, what's the?
We were asked to sign off on a hire. It was the first time I'd gone through the process. And I would have liked to have been a part of the process, when it's narrowed down to like five candidates, that would be a point that I think would be important for a board member to be part of that process.
The answer to your question is, the agenda item is board involvement in faculty hiring.
Any other directors' comments? And Cindy? So these other items in the, that we're signing beyond the trial balance, so something for Susan in adopting resolution, it's about the cafe plan and supplemental.
That's the restatement of the three B or the.
So we don't have to, we don't have to do anything besides?
You did that as part of the consent.
Okay. Sorry, thank you. Anyone else have director's comments?
Well, thank you, I think we're off to a good year.
Ten point O, confirm next meeting dates. Our next board meeting is October twenty first here at seven PM. It is preceded at five PM by the CSSU meeting. The common topic next month are indicators. We do need to, is anyone interested in doing the outcomes or indicators meeting? It's a one-time thing? Okay, I'll try to go to it. Try to go to it, if we need a more longstanding person, I don't think I'm the best suited, but I will let Sandy know. Sandy, I can go. And there's a board chairs meeting, that's the September two, so that's not a next meeting date. Is there any reason to go back into executive session for any reason? All right, we are adjourned.